Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Seated this evening, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Deitman, Lynn Conway. If we need an alternate in the future, it would be Marge Salinger, sitting over here, and Gary Velkey's holding up the back end of the table. Do I hear a motion on the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Fred.
Second.
Second, Ryan. Need discussion on the minutes?
Abstain, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to abstain. I was not here.
Thank you, Chuck.
If I can just add one little thing on the minutes. On page four of the report, there's just a section, next to the last paragraph towards the end, where it says, "Mr. Deasy asks if this has ever been done before, and the answer is yes," it should say, "no." Correction.
Okay.
So make a motion to approve the minutes with that correction.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Fred, for the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with one abstention with Chuck. Thank you, Keith. Any correspondence?
No.
Can we move right down to administrative review?
Item 5D, administrative review items. 5D1, 22288ZON, Elizabeth Rosenkrantz, zoning permit application to clear overgrowth in a non-infringement area, parcel located at 238 Almanack Road, Pawtucket Accessors Map, 56, Block 1, Lot 4, Zone RC120. So this is a four-acre property in the RC120 zone. That zone includes a 100-foot non-infringement area from tidal wetlands, where you're not really permitted to build or develop or clear, really. But the commission can allow people to do limited things for water quality restoration activities, greenways, public trails, things like that. The regulations don't offer a lot of guidance on what can and can't be done, but the commission's typically granted approvals for homeowners looking to create limited areas for waterfront access to clean up overgrowth and invasive species and things like that. The applicant here intends to keep the brush low and manage, but remove undergrowth and invasive species. They can't clear or do anything within the tidal wetlands without DEP approval because the tidal wetlands are under the state's jurisdiction. This is a vacant lot here, so any new house construction or disturbance will need a zoning permit, will have to be out of the non-infringement area. Part of the property near the waters in the FEMA V-zone, so the house, if there's a house constructed, will be pushed closer to the street. A natural resource evaluation has been submitted by a soil and wetland scientist, who states that the tidal wetlands are well-defined by vegetation. It's sort of easy to tell where they are. The bulk of the property consists of largely invasive and nuisance species of lower ecological value, and selective clearing, similar to the adjacent properties, is well-demonstrated as not adversely impacting environment. Also, a couple of years ago, the commission approved a nearly identical request for the lot right to the south, which included a similar report from the similar soil scientist. So this is very identical to something that was approved two years ago, and that lot to the south was approved recently for a new house. So recommended stipulation here, which is the same as from the other lot two years ago, is that a vegetation management plan involving maintenance of existing trees and replacement of invasive ground cover with suitable vegetation shall be reviewed by staff. And the owner of the lot is here, if there's any questions. And that is it.
Thank you, Keith. Are there any questions from the commission?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think that there's been a lot of, this is a sensitive area, but there's been a lot of due diligence that's gone into it, and, you know, that's gone into the preparation of this application. And I think if the applicant fully understands, and I assume they do, what their experts have provided for them and strictly follows the rules, I have no problem with it, and I don't think it will cause any problems.
Agreed. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the application with the stipulation, the recommended stipulation that Keith articulated.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck, for the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Item 5D2, PZ2217SD and SUP, Shirensia excavation, request for 90-day extension to file final MyLars. This was the development approved a few months ago on Mary Hall and Greenhaven Road. It was a special use permit, but also a subdivision, so subdivisions have to be recorded within 90 days of when they were approved, but the commission can approve up to two additional 90-day extensions, which is very common because there's often a lot of work to be done after the approval, like getting the town engineer's final review, legal documents, and things like that. This is the first 90-day extension that they're asking for. Yeah.
Thank you, Keith. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the request for the extension.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 5D3, PZ2223SD and CAM, Mason's Island Company, prominent development, same request as the last one, request for the first 90-day extension. This was the subdivision on Mason's Island that was approved the same night as the Shirensia application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the request for a 90-day extension for filing the MyLars.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ryan, for a second. Any further discussion?
One item, I thought, it says in the application, 11 lot subdivision. I thought it was 10.
I think it's 11, including the open space.
Oh, okay.
Because technically, that creates a dual lot.
Right.
And do you need to recuse yourself since you weren't in the...
Say again.
Do you need to recuse yourself? Would you like to recuse yourself, or you weren't on the...
For this? No. I think I can manage this one.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried.
All right. And item six, old business. This is the site plan application for the retail buildings on Liberty Street. The applicant requested table link to the January 17 meeting, and they've granted an extension to us to get out that far. So it just leaves us to the public hearings.
Lynn, I guess you're up for reading into the record for the rabbit?
I think so.
Do you have your pink slip?
I don't think I have the...
The call?
Call. I don't have it memorized.
I thought it was just the pink sheet that's sticking out of that folder? No?
Those are my notes.
Okay.
But I got, oh, well, I can use this. Okay. I can piece it together.
Fine. Perfect. Thank you.
Because I can be flexible. Here we go. Pursuant to the general statutes of state of Connecticut, revision of 1958, and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, December 20, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. on the following application. PZ2230RA, Mark Bloddy, Mr. River Farm LLC, zoning regulation amendment to remove the word rabbits from ZR212 prohibited uses in order to allow for the keeping, breeding, and raising of rabbits in the town.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yes.
So the process will be, there should be a sign-up sheet, I'm pretty sure there is, by the door, for those who would like to comment on this, in favor or opposed, or general comments. Seated this evening will be Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Deitman, and Lynn Conway. There will be, first, the applicant will have their say, then we'll have public input, and rebuttal by the applicant if necessary, staff input, and we'll have questions by the board, close the meeting, and hopefully come to a vote this evening. Is the applicant ready to go? I'm refraining from making rabbit jokes.
Yeah?
Well?
Well, if they're not here, I guess we can just jump to the next hearing and...
Continue this, as in, do we...
Do I table it for another, the third?
Maybe. I mean, it could be that, you know, if he's late showing up and we get through the other hearing, that we could take it up after.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to table the...
Make a motion to table this hearing?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. I heard it first over here, am I right, from Fred? So we'll table this hearing.
All right. So we'll have to remember, after the wind development hearing, to, you know, if he's not here, to continue it to a later date.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Moving right along.
Okay. Public hearing, PZ2231SUP, Wind Development Company LP, special use permit application for modifications to previously approved application for an 82-unit, 4/12-housing residential apartment building with units leased pursuant to CGS 8-33. Modifications include a reduction in the building size and number of units, elimination of all three-bedroom units, and placement of an aid restriction on at least one resident. Properties located at 27 West Broad Street and 15 Coswell Street, Pawtucket, Accessors Map, 1 Block 4, lots 18 and 19, Zone PV5.
Thank you, Lynn. Well, my introduction to the public hearing still sits from a few minutes ago. There's a sign-up sheet up front. Seated this evening for this hearing is Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Deitman, and Lynn Conway, with Marge Salinger as an alternate if need be in the future. I think we can jump right in, if you'd like to.
Just give us a second to set up, and we'll try to rotate these so that members of the public can see as well.
Yes, we should have all this in our packages if...
You should. Yeah, absolutely.
Meaning, it's fine by me if they want to rotate them for the public. Do any members have a problem with that?
No.
No. Any members want to see the large one up close, we can move it to you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Just want to make sure the microphone's picking me up. Good evening. For the record tonight, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and a land use attorney with the law firm of Togan Carberry in New London. And as always, I appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening. As you know, I represent Wind Development Company LP, which is the development arm of Wind Companies, a private, family-owned, regional housing developer based in Boston. I hear tonight before you in connection with my client's application to modify a previously approved affordable housing project that is to be constructed at the former Campbell Grain Mill property located at 27 West Broad Street and 15 Coswell Street in Pawtucket. Joining me this evening, my team, the project is Matt Robania. Matt is the project manager from Wind Development. I also have Paul Battaliano, who's our project civil engineer with VHB. I also have Paul Humphries, who's the project architect with the architectural team, and he should be here any minute. I also have Joe Balkis, who is our traffic engineer, also with VHB Engineers. These names should be somewhat familiar to you, if not their faces. This is the same team, including myself, that appeared before you in September of 2020 for the original iteration of this project, where we proposed an 82-unit, mixed-income apartment building on the site. That proposal, as you recall, was fully vetted by all city, town departments and agencies, and ultimately, it received a unanimous approval from this commission. That approval is still valid today, and that project as designed could be built tomorrow. However, tonight, we're here to modify our approved plans, to decrease the size, the scale, and the intensity of the project, to change our unit mix, and to add other restrictions on tenancy, and finally, to improve the overall aesthetics of the project. The modified proposal that we're going to share with you tonight consists of only 70 housing units in a smaller building with both structured and surface parking and other amenity spaces, very similar to the previous approval. Also similar to the original proposal, the modification is being submitted to you under Section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes, which is Connecticut's Affordable Housing Appeals Act. As you're aware, and I discussed two years ago, Stonington is subject to the provisions of Section 8-30G, as only 5.71% of its housing stock was determined to be affordable by the Department of Economic and Community Development last year. That's less than the 10% that's required to be placed on the state's exemption list. And as a result of that, your review of the project tonight is very different than your typical application. I know some of you are new, at least from 2020, but this application is subject to the strict provisions of Section 8-30G rather than your zoning regulations. And as I mentioned, the modified proposal before you tonight includes 70 housing units. We are maintaining the same proposal in terms of the purpose of the project, and that is to provide an inclusive, mixed-income housing opportunity here in Stonington. Last year, the average median income, or what we call the AMI, in the Norwich-New London metropolitan area, which includes Stonington, was $102,700 a year. Pursuant to Section 8-30G, to be eligible as an affordable housing project, the property that underlies the proposed project must have a restrictive covenant placed on it, a deed restriction, for a period of 40 years that will require at least 15% of the housing units to be leased to individuals, households, making 80% of AMI, and another 15% of 60%. Another 15% of the units have to be leased to individuals or households that are making 60% of AMI. Our proposal goes farther than that. We specifically designate that seven of the units in the building will be leased at market rate with no income restrictions whatsoever. Seventeen units will be leased to households with an income of 80% AMI or less. Twenty-eight of the units will be leased to households with an income of 50% of AMI or less. And finally, 18 of the units will be leased to households with an income of 30% AMI or less. In addition, and this is a change from the initial proposal, we are also adding additional provisions so that all 70 housing units will be further deed restricted. And that deed restriction will require at least one resident in each unit to be aged 55 years of age or older, or be disabled. This additional tenancy restriction is made in response to Stonington's growing senior population, which today enjoys very limited choices for affordable housing options in this community. The proposed housing units have also been modified. If you had a chance to take a look at our floor plans, you'll see that the units are only one- and two-bedroom units now. The original proposal had a number of three-bedroom units. Those have all been removed from the project. In addition to the overall reduction in the number of housing units, we've also increased the parking number spaces on-site for the project by one. That increases our project parking ratio from 1.12 spaces per unit to 1.33 spaces. In addition, the modified apartment building itself, if you look on our site plan layout, is smaller. It's approximately 25,000 square feet smaller of an apartment building. And we have, if you've looked at our elevations, and we'll go through these with you quickly tonight, our elevations have been, exterior elevations have been modified significantly to try to create a more aesthetically appearing, appealing presence of the building, one that has a little bit more New England character than the previous design. So in interest of the time tonight, I'm going to try to be very brief, but we are required to build a record tonight because this is a public hearing. In a minute, I'll ask Mr. Battaliano to come up and walk you through the modified site plan. He's going to focus on the minor changes to the site, project layout, our stormwater and utility plans, and our traffic circulation, and our parking, and he's also going to demonstrate how landscaping, the on-site amenities, and the common areas that were part of the original proposal all remain unchanged. Mr. Humphries, who's our architect, will discuss the changes to the architectural design for the smaller building. He's going to quickly review with you the floor plans, the elevations, and the proposed materials and colors for the building. And then Mr. Balkis, you may remember from last time, he's completed an updated traffic study for the project. He'll discuss the anticipated reduction in traffic proposed by the project because of the reduction in the number of units, and he's also going to reconfirm our commitment to make certain improvements to West Broad Street that were part of the original approval two years ago. I'm going to then close the presentation tonight with some concluding remarks and try to give you some guidance in light of the statutory process that's laid out in Section 8-30G in terms of your legal charge. Just for the record, I would note that we've provided public notice of this hearing to all budding property owners, as required by your zoning regulations. We've received the necessary approval previously from the Stonington Inland Wetlands and Watercourse Commission. We've obtained updated favorable recommendations from both the Stonington Economic Development Commission and the Police Commission. And while landscape and architectural design is outside of the jurisdiction of this commission on any affordable housing project, we did meet with the Architectural Design Review Board last month as a courtesy. We did receive some minor comments and suggestions, and we resubmitted plans to this commission with changes based on the two comments that they provided, and we'll go over those quickly for you tonight as well. I would just note that timing is critical here. We certainly would hope that we could garner your support tonight for this proposal and allow us to move to the next step. This project was already approved by the commission once before, and every single one of the modifications that we're proposing decreases the project intensity and proposes what we believe to be a more complementary version of the project for the surrounding neighborhood. And with that, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Paul Battaliano, our civil engineer, just to walk you quickly through our site plan layout. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Bill. Once again, my name is Paul Battaliano. I'm a civil engineer with VHB. We're located at 100 Great Metal Road in Weathersfield, Connecticut. I'm going to try to speak with the board facing the public, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to turn the board around and walk around. So very quickly and very briefly, as Bill mentioned, the site plan changes are relatively minor. Basically, if you are looking at the site plan, all our changes occurred on the left-hand side, which is planned south. Basically, what we did is we shrunk the building footprint, basically to the north, and replaced that with surface parking. So parking that was underneath in the garage is now on the surface. That's 16 spaces. So if you're looking at the site plan, everything where the parking garage entrance is, everything to the right or to the north of that has remained completely the same as it did when you last saw this plan two years ago. So our only changes, and actually, I will point to the board, and then I'll walk it around very quickly, basically showing where we added those spaces. And as Bill mentioned, everything else, the amenities, the landscape, and the utilities, everything stayed the same, with the exception of the parking spaces, which increases our parking count, I'm sorry, it actually increased the parking count only by one, but for 12 less units. So as Bill mentioned, it decreases the intensity of the project. So I'm just going to point to the board right now, and then I'm just going to walk around very quickly.
Great. Thank you.
So very quickly, this is the park around the whole plan of the building extended in this direction here. So basically, the building was reduced back to this level, which the architects will talk about in more detail, and surface parking is added here. So this park was on a curricular lower level of the building's parking. So basically, that parking is now aggravated on the surface.
That's uncovered?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So the extension of the park.
Gotcha.
Everything to the right of the parking garage entrance, which is here, everything this way.
Yep. Thank you.
So just very quickly, we did retrace our steps with the various town departments. We talked to the water company, WPCA, the engineering department, the planning department have offered comments, which were incorporated into the plan. So we feel that we've met their comments regarding, like I said, the utilities and some of the other minor comments that they have were addressed in our last submission that was made. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to have Mr. Humphries come up quickly and just go over the architectural changes. Thank you.
Name is Paul Humphries with the architectural team. We, part of our design revisions, as previously has been pointed out, we reduced the building length by about 70 feet or a little bit more. This created that extra area to the side of the building where we have the surface parking, which did, as was pointed out, increase our parking ratio. We also reduced the unit mix, so again, we no longer have any three-bedroom units, so there, it's a mix of one and two, one and two-bedroom units. And we, at the front facade, we added some gable roofs, so we brought the eve line down below the floor level of the upper floor, created some steep roofs and some normers, and again, to try to bring that New England vernacular into the design. We retained, we retained the brick at the lower elevations, and then we are using a classic New England cloperts, both white cloperts and gray cloperts, and asphalt chingle roofing, again, to try to lower the scale of the building. We also met with the Architectural Design Review Board, took their comments into hand, and we revised, based on their comments, we revised the rear facade that points, faces the tracks, and also explored the front entry sequence. And I can turn around and show the boards as well.
So the west elevation has a flat roof?
The west, yes. But we did lower the, we did lower the scale, so it does, we did add in that, yeah, breaking up that.
Right. Thank you.
Would you mind? Of course.
Yeah, and just let the public know what that is, too. Okay. Thank you. And that's the revised one or not with the architectural review?
This is based on the architectural review.
It is? Okay. Thank you, sir. So it's up to date?
So the exposed brick goes how high?
The exposed brick is the, it covers up the garage, the garage bases, so it's really the first element. And we also bring it up to the elevator. And I think you guys saw the, sure, the boards, again, just the white cloperts, gray cloperts, and then also retaining. Again, this, the white cloppards, gray cloppards, and then also retaining that.
So this is what faces the street?
Yes.
And then that over there, I'm sorry, is what faces the tracks?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
We can certainly show more boards if people have questions later if they want to go back to any board. But at this point, I'd like to call up Mr. Balkis, who's our traffic engineer, just to talk to you about his updated work on the traffic study.
Thank you. So for the record, my name is Joe Balskis. Licensed officials in the state of Connecticut. Prepared a traffic impact study for this. I'm going to have some handouts and do a quick, like, five-minute presentation on the traffic study. I'm not going to go through all the slides. I'm going to go through a few of them, just to summarize the show.
Thank you, sir.
So there's several slides here. I'm going to go through a few slides just to kind of summarize what we did. The cover sheet, cover slide, basically gives the, on the right-hand side, you see we prepared a traffic study in October, I'm sorry, of August 2020 during a pandemic. And we've since updated this with the October 20th, 2022 submission. I'm reviewing right now. So you go through the first couple of slides, talks about the existing conditions that we did. We haven't really updated that. The only thing we did update, if you go through slide, go through the slide that shows the, right here, this color right here, right? I think it's slide five or six. So that slide shows Connecticut DOT's traffic counts from I-95 and Garroton in the last couple of years. And I'm bringing that up because we did a traffic count in October at the intersection of Cogswell Street and West Broad Street. And we did that traffic count to see where we are in terms of pandemic, in terms of where traffic volumes are. And what we found is that in that, this blue sheet here, as well as the green one next to it, the traffic counts that we did back in October reflect 2017 conditions. So we're kind of back to before the pandemic. We know the pandemic had some impacts to traffic flow on the various roadways. It dropped off, obviously, as we all know, and it's come back. And depending where you look on 95, and this is during July of this year, as well as two years ago, you can see there's some variation. But the bottom line is that we're pretty much back to where we were before the pandemic in terms of traffic volumes. So my point is that our October traffic counts that we just did out the intersection are pretty much reflective of pre-pandemic conditions. So we have 2017, 2019, there wasn't that much of a change. So we have accurate traffic data that we've compiled for this updated traffic study. The next several pages just show you some figures. These are all in the report as well that were submitted, just showing you the traffic volumes, crash history. We did not update that. We wanted to use the three years of crash history before the pandemic. So we kept that in there. There's a slide there with the trip generation manual. This is what we use. This is, as traffic engineers use this, this is on the State Traffic Administration approved methodology for trip generation, what developments traffic generate in terms of what they have. So we use that for this. It's a little bit of a change. We now have a senior adult housing use that we're using. And if you flip to this page here, after that color page, I'm sorry, I didn't number them, this says traffic generation 2020 and 2022. And that gives you a real clear example of what we did in August 2020 during a pandemic and this submission here. And you can see there, we summarized for you the previous use and the current use that we submitted to you. On the left-hand side was August 2020. The right-hand side is today, okay? And you see there's weekday trips. These uses, even before and today, are very low generation of traffic. We're not talking about a retail use, a high amount of traffic during the peak hours. You look there, you see there in the morning, in the afternoon, peak hours, and we're showing enter and exiting. And we're talking about 14 trips and 18 trips. And people may say, well, that doesn't make sense. You've got a lot of parking spots. This is the peak hour. So this is during that eight o'clock peak hour, four o'clock peak hour in the afternoon, that this development is going to generate traffic. And 14 and 18 trips, very low. And that's because of the use. That's because of the use that we have here. That's because of the trip generation manual that the State Traffic Administration tells us to use. So it's very low. My point is very low generation of traffic. You almost might not notice it out there because volumes, they vary, 5%, 10% on a course of a weekday. So this is a very low generated traffic. So that's why I want to point at that table. We show you the intersection itself, what it's going to have for volumes, and then distribution, there's a map there showing you where it's all going. We're talking about, again, 14 and 18 vehicles, really not, you know, that's less than one car every two minutes, basically, that we're talking about generating. And then you get further around in the slides. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me just step back a second to go back to the table, just for the public to see. This table here shows the traffic generation I was just referring to on the left side here. This is the report that we have submitted, showing the generation. I'm just showing a map that you'll look at as well, just showing where, when we did traffic studies, you've reviewed them in the past, obviously, where is all this traffic going in terms of what direction? How is it going in which, when we talk about a development, a retail development, you know, a fast food, talking about hundreds of trips, we're a fraction of that. But even so, where is that traffic going? You know, some's going to Rhode Island, some's going up Route 2, Liberty Street, I-95. The rest of it's mostly going to the west on 234, as well as towards Mystic. But again, you're not allowing traffic. Then there's a sheet showing of the volumes. And then flipping to the capacity analysis page, okay? So we do a capacity analysis of the intersection for the existing counts we did in October. We look to the future when it's being built, and we add in this 14 and 18 vehicles. And we look at the analysis of this intersection of Cogswell Street. As we all know, you know, busy intersection, it's tough taking a left turn out of there. We analyze that in terms of the morning peak hour, the afternoon peak hour. What does this development do to it? There's a cause backup, there's a cause of problem. And we look at the existing and the no bill, as I mentioned, in the bill. And what we found is level service. We all know level service is A to F, A being the best, F being the worst, obviously. We didn't see a change in level service on the approaches, nor on the turning from Cogswell Street onto West Broad Street. We also did not see a change in queuing. And the reason for that is the lower volume generated. So meaning that there's one or two cars waiting to turn left to go out into Rhode Island to Westerly, or even turn right. You know, this low number of trips that we're generating is not going to, you know, double that or triple that. It's really not. This is a little, this is different. This is not, like I said, a retail environment. We're talking about 100 trips or 200 trips in a peak hour for like a donut shop. We don't have that. We're like a fraction of that. So that's why the results that we're seeing are understandable in terms of not seeing a change in level service or in terms of queuing. However, however. So the final slide should be the map you have or the, either one. You're going to use this picture or you can use the, showing the intersection improvement, okay? All right, so I just want to review that for you. So this, despite our impact being almost imperceptible, okay, from the standpoint of generation of this intersection, we do know there's some issues there. I've been out here. I have friends in Westerly. I come every summer and see them. I've been through this intersection, I've eaten dinner here many times. I've sat out here and watched this. That's what I do as a traffic engineer. We want to observe because we don't live here. And I've watched the traffic in the summertime. I've watched traffic at night in the fall. And yeah, there's some issues with left turning vehicles. The crosswalk is kind of long. And there's some sightline issues as you come out of Cogswell. So we recognize that. Do we have to fix that with our generation? Maybe not, but we feel it's necessary to make things easier for the project traffic. So we are recommending restriping West Broad Street. You can see that there, we're recommending creating a bypass lane for, so if you turn left into Cogswell, the through traffic will bypass that. You'll see that there. Relocate crosswalk, move that crosswalk from the west side intersection to the east side intersection. We're going to adjust pedestrian ramps a little bit. No change in on-street parking, okay? And we're also going to adjust the stop bar a little bit on Cogswell to kind of make those cars come up a little closer to the intersection to see a little better. So these are improvements on a state highway. We talked to DOT District Two a couple of years ago when we considered this the first time, and they had no issues with it, okay? They need to see a final plan. Once we get approval, as you know, the encroachment permit process, we'll go through that process. But nothing said to us that there's a problem here, that, Joe, you've got to rethink this. So we think it's a good plan. We're going to go to DOT with it when we're done here, hopefully, and go through the process. There may be some more details we've worked out with the DOT. But we're feeling very confident in the years that we've been working with them that this is, that we may need to tweak a little bit. Any tweaks we have will come back. The local traffic authority is involved with that process as well. So the town have a voice in that process. But this plan shows what we're proposing to do as part of this project, not necessarily to mitigate the impact, because there really is not much of an impact, but we think to make this intersection a better intersection for the existing users, for the residents and the visitors to park there. And with that, so the bottom line is that with our traffic report, with these improvements and the traffic we're generating, we don't see an impact to the intersection and to the area intersections from this traffic. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
I think I'll reserve my questions for the end, if that's all right.
Joe, can you clarify for the record about those improvements and whether they were part of the original?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, I did say they were. So two years ago, we did have this plan, the same improvements proposed in the original traffic study. And we talked to DOT then, as I mentioned before, for two years ago. And they didn't say, forget it, it's not going to work. They said, yes, that looks good, but you need to submit a full plan to the district. So same plan is here, all right? So we'll be submitting this plan to DOT as well.
Sir, you have a question?
Is there? Sorry.
Thank you.
Is there any?
You're welcome.
You are.
Okay. Is there any way to improve the sightline coming out of Cogswell and making that left turn? It's very difficult unless you've got one of these big honking SUVs where you can see over the cars parked along the road there. Is there any way to?
There's an easy way to do it, but it won't be liked. Remove the park in front of the cafe there. That's the way to do it, which we're not going to do that. So the obvious way to do it is bring that stop bar as close as possible so you can allow them to look beyond the parked vehicles. But the easiest way to do it is remove the parked vehicles. We're not going to do that. So we want to move that stop bar up as close as possible to the intersection, kind of like tighten the intersection up, all right? Everyone, the intersection works very well in terms of people yielding to people turning and pedestrians. But the further we bring that stop bar up, the better sightline will be for those vehicles to turn left or turn right. Sorry, Chuck, I didn't recognize you at first. Nice to see you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, and you may not have to address this in the traffic study, but is there any changes you're proposing to the lighting around that intersection?
The lighting?
Yes. Like, you know, street lighting, lighting over the intersections?
You know, we did, actually, we did look at that two years ago. The streets are out there in terms of the crossbar placement. And the lighting appears to be sufficient from that tier. But we'll look at that as part of the DOT permit. We'll look at that in terms of, do you need to add any? There's also special lights there. We'll look and see if we need to modify those to provide some additional lighting. Good question, yeah, thank you.
Couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Do they now or saving for the end?
If you don't mind now.
Go ahead.
Does the site have an OSTA permit now?
No.
Does not. Did the previous plan require OSTA approval?
No.
Excuse me, Chuck.
Obviously, this one does not either.
Excuse me, Chuck, what's an OSTA?
I'm sorry.
Office of State Traffic Administration regulates all large developments in Connecticut.
This would be the STC?
Yeah, this would be STC.
Had to give it a more complex acronym.
So the OSTA regulates major traffic generators. Major, so this is not a major traffic generator, as we're hearing.
So what is the threshold now, Joe?
So it's 100,000 square feet or 200 parking spaces.
Okay.
And it's anywhere, Chuck. It's not just on state highways, it used to be in the past.
Right.
It's on any location, so. So the OSTA is the agency which regulates how we generate traffic, as I mentioned before. The trip generation manual, that's approved by OSTA. That tells us what we use for trip generation. So our generation is a state-approved trip generation method.
So when you say DOT approval, this is a state highway, so it will require some sort of a state highway review and approval and encroachment permit?
Encroachment permit, exactly, yeah. That's what we need to get after this approval, hopefully.
And was that process started with the other project?
With a conversation, Chuck. They want to see detailed plans, and they want to see town approval of a plan before they'll even look at it. You have some experience there as well. They want to see something hard.
Right.
So if we get approval here, we'll go to the plan with DOT and start that process.
Perfect. I compliment you on the good synopsis.
Oh, thank you.
So I just, Joe, I just have a quick education question for myself.
Sure.
Since this is now an age-limited resident building, does the actual time of day for the peak hour traffic generated from the residence change?
Yeah, yes. What you're talking about is we have, in generating traffic, we have the adjacent street peak hour, commuting traffic.
Right.
Then we also could have the peak hour of generator.
Right.
Okay? I'll look, but this use, I don't think has that. Like, some developments may generate traffic, like a bank possibly, in the middle of the day versus the morning peak hour, okay? So this use, I don't think has that in terms of, you know, in terms of maybe it's generating traffic, a higher number of, amount of traffic later in the day.
Right.
I don't think it is. I can look, I'll look at that, but I don't think it is.
So you didn't change that as far as we're?
No, not, no. Because we're, and then you look in the middle of the day, the background traffic could be much lower, is much lower.
Right.
So if you generate a little more traffic, and even were generating more traffic, what do we generate more, 10 trips more? The background traffic is going to drop so much more. So it's going to be even less of an impact, if you will, in terms of that. So I'm confident that, look at the peak hour and the community peak hour is sufficient for this impact analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Well, while we have you on the hot seat, I might as well jump in.
It's, okay.
The alley, and this may not be under your jurisdiction, but the alleyway to the west will be one-way?
No, we're not, we are not changing the flow on the alleyway.
It's two-way now.
Yeah.
It's too late?
Yeah, we were leaving it as it is. We're leaving it as it is.
Which will be two-way?
Which it is today, two-way, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. But you will be exiting from the parking lot into the?
We're allowing, we are allowing traffic to do that. You can, you can do that, yes.
Because I remember like last time, you weren't going to go that way, as I remember.
I'm trying to remember, a couple of years ago, I?
Because I remember asking that same question, and it was. Excuse me, I have a tickle.
Once again, Paul, I'm the site engineer from VHB. The previous plan had the same traffic circulation. We were also allowing for two-way traffic out from that alley. We do have rights to, limited rights to use that, so there's no change there.
Okay, thank you. I was down there today on that crosswalk where you were proposing, near the catch basin and the tree. And looking west, well, I was on the south side of Route 1. You know, I was trying to get towards Cogswell Street.
Yeah, I got the aerial photo up on the slides, yeah.
Those sightlines are not very good on either crosswalk when looking left, looking west. And I was just wondering if this little island you have painted out in the middle, that, I'm calling it an island, I'm not sure what the proper traffic?
Yeah, island, yeah.
Would that, how wide is that going to be? Meaning if I were crossing the street and I can take one lane, can I stand in that little island waiting to get the next lane?
So, so, so?
You understand my?
That's a great question. It's a great question. Because what's happened now is state law has changed. The state law has changed that if a pedestrian is in a crosswalk in Connecticut, then both directions of traffic has to stop. So that's like October.
I've been testing that law.
So that? So that law is, so, so.
You're still alive.
So regarding that island, the island is a potential refuge if someone gets caught. We don't want people to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
But they could. But now the motor vehicle laws have changed in Connecticut. If there was someone in the crosswalk, no matter where they're in the crosswalk, no matter which side you're on, you have the vehicle to stop.
That's good to know. So I have legal rights.
Yeah. So the sightline there, you know, the sightline there, you know, we looked at that as well.
It's not good.
It's not great.
But it's the same thing as your traffic coming out of Cogswell. You're stuck with the building.
The speeds here are low through here. We have traffic, well, low in terms of, we have traffic coming, we have parked vehicles, you know, I can't speak to 1:00 in the morning, obviously, but for the most part, the speeds seem to be lower here than what would be expected here. So, but that's something, we'll have to look at that as well with the DOT's middle.
Anything you could do about it, but?
You could have advanced warning signs if need be. So we'll look at that with the DOT's middle. They may, they may want rectangle rapid flashing beacons possibly there. You know, that's something that we'll look at with DOT and see what the last, because this is a state highway, so if they want that, then we'll put them in.
And the other question would be, would a blinking yellow light, you know, draped across the roadway, I'm sure the state would flip out over that, but is that possible?
It is possible. You talk like a caution light over the intersection for vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be reviewed. I mean, if there's a, if there's a.
But that would come from them, not you.
Correct, correct. But just, I'm like I'm teaching my class here a little bit.
That's fine.
In terms of, because I do teach a little bit, but if there's a issue with crashes, if there's an issue with driver expectancy of an intersection approach.
Right.
You might want something like that. I'm just trying to help you out a little bit in terms of thinking that, having that caution light flashing, that's where you use something like that. Usually, it's on a rural intersection as well, where the intersection is not expected for the driver.
At higher speeds, maybe.
Higher speeds. Here, you know, the intersection is not unexpected. It's not. So I don't see that. I mean, it's a possibility when it goes to DOT, but I don't see that being something that they would ask for. Certainly don't meet a warrant for traffic signal, as you can imagine. But I could see that, they could want a little more control, a little more, maybe a couple more warning signs for a pedestrian crossing possibly. They could want, they could want that, especially if they say that we're adding pedestrians here with development. So they could ask for that. And that's something that we would obviously oblige to talk to them about.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Just one more question, Chairman. It keys into what you were asking. Did you do any analysis of the warrants? Does this meet any of the warrants for a signal?
Chuck, no, we did not. Yeah, because I could tell you that just looking at volumes does not meet a warrant for any signal.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
I have a call.
One more.
Back here. So I went there on Saturday, and I tell you, I couldn't make a left out of Cogswell onto West Main. And it wasn't because of sightlines, it was because of traffic. I see the traffic study doesn't take into account the weekends. Is that correct?
No, does not. No. And so what you experienced is what I've experienced as well, is that in Westerly, there's no traffic signal. It didn't enough for another mile. So you're getting the constant flow that's happening there. And we understand that. That's why, that's why we said that, looking at this, what can we do to make that, make that left turn a little easier by seeing a little easier? But you're right, it can be difficult to turn left out of there with the oncoming traffic from Westerly. We acknowledge that.
It wasn't possible. I did it, but I was a lancher's drive.
So I've done, I've done it several times. I've done it in the summertime as well, and like you, I think I did it about three weeks ago. And what I found was that a lot of drivers will grant, will give you permission. They'll say, oh, you see, you're there, and let you go. That's happened many times. But it is, it is difficult to turn left out, yes. We agree with that. We're not adding a lot of traffic type movement. A lot of our traffic is not going to Westerly itself. We also have the alleyway. If that is difficult for some drivers, they could go to the alleyway and turn left from there. But yes, it is understood that it is a difficult intersection. But that's why we're trying to make it a little, try and improve it as best we can for that movement as well as the other movements.
And who would pay for the improvements? Who?
The applicant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our entire team's going to be available too, if anybody has any additional questions later in the presentation. So I want to thank you again for your time and attention tonight. This evening, I do want to spend a couple of minutes, though, just on your legal charge. I know some of you have reviewed 830G applications before. Some of you may have not, so I think it's important that I just put this into the record. The charge that you have tonight is a little bit different than your typical site plan or special permit application that you review. Connecticut's Affordable Housing Act allows developers who propose qualifying residential projects to obtain relief from the bulk, dimensional, and use requirements of local zoning regulations. And I can explain it, maybe in the simplest way, is that the Connecticut legislature, whether we like it or not, has determined that the development of affordable housing is so important to the future of the state that it's effectively overridden local zoning authority for these types of projects. Now, we're still required to come before you and go through your process for land use approval, but we can only be denied on very narrow and limited grounds. And as I mentioned before, Stonington is not on the state exemption list, so it is subject to 830G. And the good news, I would say, for you is that when you do have affordable housing projects that are approved here in town, each one of those affordable units gets you one step closer to getting on that exemption list. In compliance with Section 830G of the Act, we've provided an affordability plan for this project. That plan meets or exceeds the minimum requirements that are set forth by statute to qualify the project as affordable housing. Our plan includes provisions for the designation of units, instruction details, deed and lease restrictions, administration and compliance measures, marketing, tenant eligibility, and sample rent calculations. In terms of your decision tonight, multifamily residential units are allowed in the underlying PB5 district, but the application that we've submitted to you does not comply with your density requirements, building height, parking configuration, and several other requirements of the zoning regulations. But that's okay, because Section 830G, under Section 830G, a lack of zoning compliance cannot be the basis for denying an application. Likewise, we believe we meet all of your special permit criteria, but those are not applicable to our application either, except where they directly involve a clear health or safety issue. Under the provisions of 830G, the entire process has sort of turned on its head. The burden of proof actually shifts to the commission, not the applicant. And it's, you are required to grant us an approval, except where you can prove, based on substantial evidence that's been put into the record, that a denial is necessary to protect, quote, "substantial interests in health and safety." And as you know, substantial evidence is not conjecture. It's not feelings, it's not anecdotes, it's not what I think because I may have lived in Pawtucket my whole life. It is reliable expert testimony, reports and other information that establishes the facts of the matters involved or the impacts described. And even if negative evidence may exist in the record, the law says that you must still approve our application unless you can demonstrate that the public interest in health and safety clearly outweigh the community's need for affordable housing. Further, even if you find that, you also need to demonstrate that such identified public interest in health and safety cannot be protected by reasonable modifications to the plan that we've shown here tonight. Now, this is a very high legal standard. It's probably the highest legal standard that you have to deal with as a zoning commission here in Connecticut. And our courts have routinely sided with affordable housing developers, except in the most egregious cases where a project is so dangerous to the community. But while that legal standard and your consideration is very limited tonight, we don't think your deliberation should be difficult. And that's because I think there's very good reasons for you to approve this project regardless of Section 8-30G. You know, first and foremost, the project, I believe, is wholly consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We are cleaning up a long blighted property in downtown Pawtucket and revitalizing an abandoned mill site. We're creating new public open space opportunities, scenic views and linkages along the Pawtucket River. And we're attracting new residential development to support the historic downtown. We are developing in, you know, in compliance with all modern building code requirements, including modern floodplain construction standards. The affordable housing we're building, we believe, will make great strides in diversifying housing opportunities, which is a major goal of your plan, in terms of both style and income level. And we think this project will help promote a pedestrian-friendly, walkable, infill, and green building development targeted for seniors in Pawtucket. Finally, the improvements that we're making to West Broad Street are going to improve the safety of both vehicular and pedestrian connections in the area above and beyond what impact our project is having. As I close tonight, I just want to acknowledge that I realize that this project's been controversial. I think we can all agree on that. There's been a lot of rhetoric involving this development over the last few years, and sometimes it's been contentious. There are some that simply oppose affordable housing out of principle. Some of that is because of deeply held prejudices. And there's nothing that I'm going to be able to say tonight that can sway those people's opinion. There are also people who have truly legitimate concerns about how we deal with affordable housing here in Connecticut, how it is legislated, how it's funded, how it's financed, and the role of both the public institutions and private developers in that process. And those are reasonable points of public debate. But tonight is not the forum for that discussion. That's not what tonight is about. Tonight is an administrative hearing that's set out by statute for a specific development at a specific location. And I would submit to you, it needs to be approved under the strict standards that are set forth in Section 8-30G. Your town planner has done an excellent job, as usual, in describing those requirements, going through them and breaking them down step by step. And I think it leads you to the, to the understanding, and I believe the conclusion, hopefully, that this modified design, the design that we're putting forward tonight, is a great improvement over the project that was approved two years ago. And it's going to provide a chance for qualifying seniors to be residents of Pawtucket, to live there, to support and frequent downtown businesses, to enjoy everything that Pawtucket has to offer, and doing so without paying an arm and a leg for safe and reasonably priced quality housing. From our perspective, we hope that you will welcome this project and these new residents to Pawtucket. I urge you to support the message that these, these people are welcome here in Stonington, and I urge you to approve this important project modification tonight. Thank you again. We're going to remain available. If you have any questions, I would reserve the right of rebuttal, and I would certainly be happy to answer any questions from the public during my rebuttal as well. So thank you tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Sweeting.
I have one question.
Right now? Okay.
I saw the lighting, I saw the lighting you've chosen for the parking lot, the extended. But I don't see where it is on the plan.
I can have our civil engineer come up and try to answer that.
Mike, I came over and.
Sure, that's great. So I certainly see the type of lighting you've chosen, but where, where is it on this parking lot?
Sure. It's, you can see it, it's based on every sheet. It says symbol right there.
So there's one, two?
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It's because you're more, right?
Okay.
And the photometric plan in the back will show the light still, which shows that nothing will be parked.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
Yep, thank you.
So now we'll move into the public input section of our hearing. We'll start out for all those in favor of this development.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is also part of your record already, but I did provide a copy this evening as well, and I'm just going to read it.
Would you mind just bending the microphone down closer to your, yeah, thank you. With your mask, it's a little muffled.
I'll take it down. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so I'm Judd Rosen, and I'm actually the closest resident, residential owner to the proposed project. I have been owning, I built, and I occupy the property at 6 Cogswell Street for nearly 30 years since 1993. During that time, I've been continuously and directly involved with the town of Stonington on these types of planning projects. I come here to make these comments. The removal of the Campbell Grain building has been a welcome opportunity to develop within a larger planning area a positive downtown community. I welcome specifically, and I come specifically to encourage the Plan and Zoning Commission and the town of Stonington and the wind companies of Boston to continue working together to redevelop the Campbell site. A bit of background. I come to this meeting fully vested on the happenings of our community and in full participation with various levels of government and groups. Some of you know I've been around and made comments at other kinds of meetings as well. I am fortunately a past Plan Commission Chairman in another jurisdiction, a village board member and an advisor to the county commissioner on matters of planning. I was a member of the Westerly-Pawtucket Task Force, in part discussing how the two communities could work together in developing common land use practices. Further to this goal, I participated in the Design Charette with the town of Stonington, a project attempting to resolve these exact planning issues for the solution of the downtown corridor. Two years ago, I was invited by the Economic Development Commission to review the initial site plans, suggestions for the Campbell Grain and site development. And I have recently reviewed the current, the original program and this revised program. And in conclusion, I wish that this revised proposal, I want it to be approved, and I urge the Plan and Zoning Commission to vote favorably for its approval.
Thank you, sir.
I did want to say one other thing, kind of off of this for a second. You know, the Task Force doesn't exist anymore, the Westerly-Pawtucket Task Force, so I'm kind of the last of those people around. If they were around, if that Task Force was around, I think it would stand up and applaud this potential that you have to approve tonight. It was something that was worked on for a long time, how additional, modern, if you will, housing could be brought into the Pawtucket area and benefit the retail establishments as well. So I want to say I'm honored to be the last standing member.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Don Kluberdance.
Hi, I'm Don Kluberdance from Pocatuck, and I fully support this development project at Campbell Green, and I want to see it built, and I also want to see the current site cleaned up. There's a high demand for new senior housing in all areas of Stonington and a low supply. And for many years, Stonington's leaders and volunteer committees have understood this housing situation and considered it a high priority. Economical housing units have been built. That's good. I applaud the town of Stonington for teaming with Wind over the past few years in the development and redesign of this much-needed project. Thank you for your persistence and interest.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jim Lathrop.
Hi, I'm Jim Lathrop. Over the last four years, talking about this, the objections to this come in six categories, in my view. It's too big, it's too ugly, it's too much traffic, not enough parking, consumes too many public resources that should be used elsewhere, and it's a great idea, just not here. Over the last two years, this project has evolved to address many of those concerns. Too big, it's a little smaller. Too ugly, it looks a lot different now than it did two years ago. Too much traffic, there's less. Not enough parking, there's more. And Don, right before me, touched about, touched a little bit about supply and demand. There's not enough supply of housing. This helps correct that in small measure. The problem's a lot larger than this one development. But a supply of housing will, by basic economics, eventually drive down the cost of it, if done in enough quantity. But what he didn't talk about enough, I think, was the demand it creates. Judd touched upon that. The walkable aspects of this development are pretty immense. You know, Sierra, Sierra the Barber at 38 West Broad Street is going to get more haircuts. Steve Capizano on Cogswell Street is going to have a few more customers for Olive Wood. Mel's Creamery will sell more ice cream. Jewish City Savings Bank may have a couple of more customers. Hoof's may have some more customers, too. I'm not sure if they need it, but they may anyway. McQuade's will sell more groceries. People might just walk over and do that, and buy their groceries there. They might not even move their car because it's walkable. And the United Theater over at Westerly will probably sell a few more tickets because people want to see movies. Walkability helps create community. And I think what hasn't been touched on enough tonight is the walkable aspects of this development. If you lived here, you can walk to a lot of stuff. I can envision living in this location, not using a carpool a heck of a lot, and doing the things that, for the most part, I'd like to do. So walkability can create community. The last thing I'd like to touch on is that large, underdeveloped, marginalized sites can create havoc in a community and events that people don't want. From Cogswell Street in Mystic to Cogswell Street in Pocatuck recently, this commission can help fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Dave Hammond.
Good evening, Dave Hammond, Chair of the Economic Development Commission. I live on Green Haven Road, 23-year resident of Pocatuck. First of all, I just wanted to say I wanted to thank our EDC team. The town can be very proud of these 12 volunteers that have devoted time and energy to keeping Stonington economically strong and vibrant. So thank you to our team. With regards to this proposal, over the years, the EDC has undertaken research and learning, including from organizations such as Strong Towns, attended housing-related seminars, and hosted, invited housing experts to our public meetings. Principles espoused by Strong Towns and other planning organizations to bring vibrancy to neglected areas like downtown Pocatuck include infill development, high-density residential to put feet on the street, and more people to support local business, reducing parking minimum regulations that have killed downtowns nationwide by creating parking lot deserts, and more. So we strive to abide by those principles in our work in the EDC. For this project, the value to Stonington includes, but is not limited to, it establishes an inclusive, mixed-income community while launching a transformational development for Pocatuck, delivers a much-needed boost to a downtown that needs new investment through an injection of tens of millions of dollars, enhances downtown Pocatuck as a walkable neighborhood through proximity to shops, restaurants, parks, the library, transportation, other amenities, a boon to business. It adds vibrancy to the downtown by using an underutilized infill site, which is a proven and desired way to knit together the fabric of village centers. The Campbell Green site is especially well-suited for mixed income. It has utility infrastructure in place, walking distance to goods and services, reducing the need for cars, and which is also an expense people with different incomes may wish to avoid altogether. The residential development is aligned with the 2015 Plan of Conservation Development, our POCD, the strategic plan of the town, which, for recommendations to strengthen and enhance our village centers, which this will do. And that was in turn informed in part by the 2005 Pocatuck Revitalization Strategies document that Judd alluded to, a study that involved considerable public input through surveys and public input sessions. This is actually an idea that's been in the works for over 15 years. So in closing, I would urge you to join the EDC in supporting this project, which will serve to revitalize downtown Pocatuck. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this project? Ready. Mr. Tamski, not in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Ben Tamski, and I'm speaking tonight for Laura Graham as she's traveling. Commissioners, as this is an 8-30G application, we understand our Plan and Zoning Commission will likely approve the Campbell Green proposal. Thanks to Wind's former Connecticut Speaker of the House turned lobbyist, CHFA will likely approve millions of our taxpayer dollars to fund this project. Wind will dip both hands into our public taxpayer funds for a fat profit. Using the blunt force of 8-30G, Wind is choosing to ride roughshod over the wishes of our community for one reason only: profit. They stand to make so much profit, in fact, that they are willing to pay the owner of this blighted property $1 million for a property assessed at just over $100,000, a property with a $70,000 lien from our town's past cleanup efforts. This Wind project is a textbook case of corporate welfare. Our community would derive no benefit from this project. We already have multiple new 8-30G properties with vacancies within walking distance of this site, and another 100-plus unit 8-30G will soon go up on the Brookside Village lawn. Pocatuck already has over 15% debt to affordable housing. For the build price of each of these Wind apartments, bloated by the taxpayer-funded gifts, a family could instead buy a home with a yard in Pocatuck. In 1979, our federal and state governments built Route 78 specifically to alleviate the traffic problems at the Pocatuck Bridge bottleneck. Our community will suffer a higher rate of accidents and traffic congestion for generations because of Wind's project. This Wind project overrides our PV5 zoning and disregards the small businesses whose precious little parking will be robbed first by Wind's construction trucks and once built by Wind's residents and guests. As a developer, has no intention of building a footbridge connecting these new apartments to the Westerly train station, public transportation has been ignored, further aggravating the need for cars. The Campbell Green site was marked red on the last emergency flood map released by Town Hall. Why build new primary homes here? Stonington doesn't have a history of fighting other 8-30G developments, just this ill-conceived Campbell Green proposal. Our state Senator Summers and state Representative Howard have pledged to fight this project at every opportunity available to them. We may be running out of options to fight back, but tonight we are here to let Wind know that if they choose to build this, they are forcing this project on us against our will. Since this commission represents the residents of Stonington, I hope that you'll remember that Stonington residents soundly rejected this project at the polls. We voted 2,764 to 1,173 to refuse the tax abatement for this project in October of 2020. The townwide turnout, 3,937 voters, or 27%, was the highest for a referendum since 2006. Please take a stand tonight and discourage this ill-conceived project from moving forward. To avoid being sued by Wind, we understand you are forced to approve this 8-30G project formally, but looking at the facts, we hope you will find a way to signal dissent in the record of tonight's meeting. Your dissent would reach CHFA, and if those tax dollars were denied, it would discourage Wind from building. Bad architecture is around for a long time. Attached, please, find Senator Summers' letter to CHFA against this project, the Connecticut DOT crash map showing accidents from 2015 to 2022, and the town of Stonington's recent storm evacuation map marking the Campbell Green site at high risk. Thank you for your consideration, Laura Graham, 2 Moss Street, Pocatuck.
Thank you, Ben. Tracy Swain.
Tracy Swain, 52, Pocatuck. So we heard Mr. Sweeney talk about how you, the one thing that you can do to deny this, and that was, actually, I'm going to read this section, which I kind of think was a little interesting. So the State of Connecticut general statute under Section 8-2A says that the zoning commission is to regulate under the subjects to standards set forth in the regulations to conditions necessary to protect the public from health, safety, convenience, and property values. And under 8-23, such regulations shall be designed to lessen congestion in the streets, to secure safety from fire, panic, flood, and other dangers, to promote health and general welfare, to facilitate the adequate provisions for water. And that is what I'm going to hear, stand here and discuss with you guys tonight, is water. And that is something that has not been discussed by anybody. I actually was the one who did the petition, so that all of the members are aware, to the referendum, okay? I have had many conversations with Wind about this issue. I think that they were sold a bad sale of goods on a piece of property in town, and they are, unfortunately, the ones that are trying to, since then, try to come back from that voting with a better proposal for the residents. But in the meantime of all that, I went in under the wonderful Town of Westerly and requested all the documents from them. And there was a letter that was dated on August 14th from, if you bear with me one moment, August 14th of 2020, which was before you guys approved the original. It was from Tom Nicholson from CE Engineering, and it was to Paul at VHB. And in this letter, I'm going to read a section of it, it states also, "We would need the fire flow requirement for the proposed development that is specified by the local fire marshal. Please note that we cannot conduct the hydraulic model assessment without the fire flow requirement specified and signed off by the fire marshal. Fire flow will be critical to this project. You are proposing to tie into a 100-year-old, 6-inch cast iron main. Not going to get much water out of that." Then, on August 17th at 10:14, from Paul at VHB to Tom Nicholson, this is what it stated. Pump in the building, won't it will just vacuum the main in the street below 20 PSI? I don't know if replacing the main to South Broad will work. I'll have, model it. One thing I would check out is how married you MEP guy is to his fire flow. He has 615 at 60 PSI. Like I said in my last email, your statistic pressure on site is about 60 PSI with no flow. This would be tough to meet with a 12-foot always-back to the Hinkley Hill tank. It is not a pipe size issue, it's an elevation issue with this 60 PSI residual." Then, later on, that same day, at 10:43, Tom writes back to and says, "Now, I could write you a proposal to get paid to tell you this, but I don't work that way. I looked at the numbers from the data you sent me. I didn't run the model, just ran the basic numbers. And when I saw where it was, I suspected it might be a problem. Your statistic pressure on site, based on the Westerly Water HGL, will be in the low 60 PSI's, not accounting for head loss. You have a peak fire flow of 615 GPM at 60 PSI being fed through a 100-year-old, 6-inch cast iron pipe with a head loss of 65,1000. Not going to work, sorry." Then, from the fire marshal, Kevin Burns, on August 17th at 3:39, he writes to Mr. Nicholson's CE Engineering, which also CC'd, "Gentlemen, I don't know the laws or procedures, but here you have to provide the developers with the flow calculations they need to submit a sprinkler design showing their calculations for my approval. Bill, why do projects in Pocatuck get such a runaround?" Now, he was sending that to Bill at the Westerly Water Department. Then, on August 19th, from Mr. Burns, back to Bill at the Water Department, "I haven't seen anything yet that confirms Westerly Water can supply water for the project. I would say a quick meeting or conference call, including Paul from Wind Companies," and I have included them in this email. Then, after I received that, I received this engineering report from CNE dated August 21st, and in that, the third paragraph, it stated, "A needed fire flow NFF requirement of 500 gallons per minute GPM at 60 PSI residual pressure was identified for this project in correspondence from the local fire marshal on 8/27/20. This fire flow requirement was utilized in the model." And according to Chief Burns, he never released anything because they never asked him for it. And that was literally from the Westerly Water Department. Now, after that investigation, and I had a little birdie at the Water Department telling me to go look for something else, and I said, "Okay," which was this. It's a CNE engineering report on the water lines in Pocatuck. We have what's called water loop issues in town. Now, I don't know how many of you here are residents of Pocatuck, who may or may not have water, town water, from Westerly, but I was educated. So I'm going to educate you guys, for those that you don't know, and for the residents behind us. So water loops go like this. If you have a dead end as a street, because that's how it was explained to me, and the water goes through, Chuck's nodding his head going, "I'm well aware," and that water pressure, when the fire happens and the firemen are looking for water, it's going to dead end, and it's going to stop, and the flow is going to get reduced. And that's a big issue. Right now, as it stands, with our water loop issues, according to this massive, wonderful report, right now, and the best example to put it is this, is we had unfortunate fire in Mystic Cogswell Street, okay, with all the wonderful fire departments from other towns to help out, which I commend them and then some. If we had a fire in any part of Pocatuck tomorrow or later tonight, in any of our buildings that have sprinkler systems, one building that has a fire sprinkler system that goes off, every building in Pocatuck that has a sprinkler system in it has to be evacuated, according to the fire marshal, because there's not enough pressure to make another sprinkler system go off because of the water loop issues. And I was also told that this also, because this is a public hearing, and this is the only meeting I could do this at, is this. Westerly Water Department has put us, the town residents, in a very unsafe position with all these water loops. And the way they budget, their budget is this, is that in the past, if Westerly needed to fix water lines on School Street or Elm Street, or whatever it might be, they budget that in their budget, they go ahead and they turn around and they ask the, their town, the mayor's and board, to increase the funding for them. And then, in turn, we, as Pocatuck residents, also get an increase in our bill to replace and fix their water lines. They have not done that whatsoever for Pocatuck. So Pocatuck residents have been paying to repair and replace and upkeep Westerly lines, but they're not in turn, Westerly residents have not done that in turn for Pocatuck residents. So I just have to put that on the record, that there is an issue, and it's not just about a Wind issue. I had to use that because that was the only thing I had at my hands to be able to have this come out. this come out in a public hearing, so everybody is aware. Excuse me. So, what happens is, even if, regardless of what I said, and I get the whole 830G, excuse me, issues and everything, if you have to approve it because it's 830G, and I get it, but I just want you to know that we have a water issue and it's a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others' comments? Not in favor? Please approach. May I have your name? I'll need your name and address, please.
Stephen Capozano, on my Cogswell Street, have a shop there, Capozano Olive Oils and Vinegars, which I want Jim to visit soon. So, with that being said, I'm going to take a little different tact with what I have to say. And I appreciate your comments about the traffic, first and foremost, because a lot of times, we, I'm in the olive oil business, and there's a lot of science with the olive oil business, but the idea of the palate doesn't always mesh up with the science. And it's true with traffic studies also. You can have the scientific study, you know, and then have these towns that have problems because they weren't thinking in a common way type. For instance, today, with all the excitement down there, people leaving Cogswell Street, a truck trying to get into Cogswell Street from Westerly, had to wait quite a long time for all the traffic to leave. And it backed up a lot of the traffic that was going from Westerly into Parketuck. So, there's a lot of different things going on with this, and it is, you be ready for the summer with this development, that's for sure. But the way that I want to approach what I have to say is to understand that, for many years, I worked in human services. I was a part of helping people. I started as a young boy in direct care and then worked my way up and enjoyed it very, very much. But there was, the idea that what we were trying to do was the idea of a quality of life, as we all know. We tried to work from that standpoint, and we have to define what that quality is. But as we were working, and I worked with some great people outside of Philadelphia, some innovative people in this field in the 80s, early 80s, but we also noticed that was not only a quality of life that was happening in regards to those that had need, but there was some that were dealing with it from a quantity of life, meaning how much can I get from this? And I say that only because when this project was first proposed, I went back and I looked at the property, and my first gut reaction, and this was just a gut reaction, was it doesn't fit. Very simply, it does not fit. Too big and too small an area. And if you were looking for something to give a quality of life to, I have to tell you, this would be, I can hear the people that I worked with would say, "That's not it. Let's work on something different. Let's do this well." So, but I'm a patient man. I like to, I like to listen. I like to, and you didn't hear much out of me for a number, for a long time, and finally I'm able to speak. I spoke at the police commission meeting. But I also went to the architectural committee meeting, and they had this presentation, you know, just like it was. And the question came up, "Well, what about the back?" You know, there was nothing happening. They had made this nice facade in the front, nothing in the back. And the response was, "Nobody's going to see it." And I thought, hmm, quantity of life. Let's maximize it in the way that we can. Because, first of all, people were going to be living there and looking at it. People were going to be on the train going by, and what they were going to see was this blank thing in front of them going into Westerly. And it showed me just what the intentions actually were in regards to it. You can say as much as you like about the prettiness of it, but the idea is it doesn't fit. And I think that has to be clear. So, my thought, my proposal, is that it's very hard to stop, and I think Tracy spoke very well with it. I think Laura speaks very well with it. And regards to that, you know, maybe they, if they have to build it, they should build it without the taxpayers' funding. I mean, if that's what they want to do for the quality of life that goes on in regards to what we're doing, that could be something they do. I'm a businessman. I know how that works and stuff like that. But you have to be honest about the situation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for clarifying that I am speaking under general comments. And before I talk to you about what I learned, reading both the traffic studies of the old and the new, but I want to talk about, to make comments on two things, previous speakers. It is unclear to me, when we talk about that island in front of wherever, that what I call the Barrow Spelling, which is where the little eatery place is and some other things. Is that going to be raised? Is it raised or is it just lines in the road? So, maybe their engineer can talk about that rebuttal?
Good question.
And Mr. DC asked about lights there. There is a light right in front of the little restaurant there, and also in front of Besset and right on that corner there. And I'm going to report those lights out, the double lamp. But there is lighting there. I don't think I'd like to see a little flashing light over there. Okay, now to my random thoughts. First of all, I am glad that Wynn Development has abandoned the idea of asking the Town of Stonington for a tax abatement on a project 10 years after it is completed. Never done in the Town of Stonington before. The people were wise to reject that. This building is proposed to be 52 feet 9 inches high, and it's hard for me to believe that a building that high would not cast a shadow on the buildings in front of it, like Besset and the Vaca Buildings and the little condominiums or apartments that are there. They're asking for a waiver on the shadow plan. I would like to hear their architect justify their request for a waiver for a shadow plan, because I'm pretty sure the property owners would like to know whether or not they're going to have a shadow on their buildings at some point in the day. Regarding the Architectural Review Board, I know that they went before them, and they had two concerns. One was the rear, and from what I read, it appears that they did something with their drawings and improved the rear, and I agree. People driving through Parketuck on the train, riding through Parketuck on the train, will have, would not appreciate looking at something terrible. So, they have improved that. The other thing that they wanted was a change on the front entrance, and I could not determine from what the report said and from what their architect said, he said, "We explored the front entrance." To me, that doesn't mean they changed it or improved it. So, I would like them to give you some kind of clarification on that front entrance. Now, whoops, wrong page. Regarding the traffic study for 2022, I read it, and I adamantly believe that there is a false assumption made by them in the report as regarding traffic exiting Cogswell Street and going up West Broad Street, which they call West. I'm a senior citizen, a very old senior citizen. I have lived in Parketuck my whole life, and I drive downtown almost every day. And I do not think that people like me in my situation and those residents who are going to be living there are going to be turning west, going on to Route 2, going up to Route 2 or Route I-95. I don't think that's where those people are going to go. They're going to go into Westerly. As I go into Westerly, I go there to shop for food, I go there to the dollar stores, I go there to the hardware stores, I go there to the florists. Everything that I need and they will probably need is in Westerly, not going up Route 2 and not going to I-95 most of the time. Okay. So, whether or not, in their analysis, you know, they're saying most of the traffic goes that way. If it's the other way around, as I think it might be, whether or not it changes the level of service at that point at Cogswell and West Broad. The level of service they claim at their levels does not change. Did you read the reports? The level of service is E and F. It goes from A to F. The level of service there is E and F. Don't forget that. However, they have proposed mitigating circumstances and changing of the crosswalk and putting the island, whether or not be raised or not, we'll find out later. I think those will help. I do agree that those will help the situation. Okay. Now, they did not tonight at all mention West Broad Street at Route 2, Liberty Street, coming into town. Those, that intersection is not mentioned at all tonight. And the DOT, they keep saying in their report, is still evaluating it. And I'll tell you, I think the situation we have there right now is pretty darn good. And even Jason Vincent, our former director of planning, has said, "That is the most courteous travel, traffic, traffic section of town." And I would agree, and I think it was proposed at some time in the past, that a light would be put there. Please, Wynn, do not suggest that to the Town, to the State DOT, that people will not go for a traffic light over there. Now, as to the percentage of our affordable housing in the Town of Stonington, they did not submit anything new. They used 2010 census to calculate 5.71%. I'm pretty sure we had a census after that. Isn't it every 10 years? So, it would have been nice to see actually what it's more, something more accurate as to what our actual percentage is, considering all the affordable housing that we've had put in Parketuck. And what I would like their team to address also is, how will their affordable housing, and I didn't realize they're going to let seven units be market rate. I didn't read that anywhere in any of the reports. Did you? I guess that's their right, but that's a surprise tonight. Anyway, I want to know what their, whatever the number it was that they said they were going to make, let's see, I don't remember exactly, what that's going to do to our affordable housing number, percentage. Is it going to raise it? Is it going to lower it? Maybe I would like their team to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlene. Any other comments? Attorney Sweeney, would you like some rebuttal time?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, William Sweeney for the applicant. I won't comment on the positive. I thank people who appeared here tonight to speak in favor of the project. In terms of the opposed, Mr. Tamski read a letter from Ms. Graham. I would submit to you that 95% of that letter has no bearing on your legal charge tonight. As I said before, issues regarding Connecticut's legislation on 830G, how 830G projects are funded or are they financed, whether the public should invest taxpayer money in them or they shouldn't, are legitimate issues for people to debate, but that's not what we're here for tonight. And it certainly is not something that you can consider in your evaluation of the project. The only thing that was brought up in the letter that Ms. Graham commented, submitted that I think is valid is there is federal flood plan on the property. We talked about this at the last proposal. There's actually less building now on the property than there was before. All units in the property are elevated above the base flood elevation. And in the recommended conditions or stipulations for approval that your town planner has submitted to you for consideration, you'll notice that the submission of a flood evacuation plan as a condition of approval is also included. That's something that we have to do for the State Department of Housing as well, and we'd be more than happy to work with staff on that issue. Moving on to Ms. Swain's comments. First, she references two statutes, 8-2, which is the enabling statute in our, that gives your, this, or the powers that it has. She also commented on 8-23, that is the power that's given to planning commissions to also look at streets and the development of land. What she doesn't point out, or maybe doesn't understand, is 830G trumps those, 830G overrides those, and that's part of the legislative framework and scheme that the legislature has approved. She can disagree with that. I know a lot of people do. You can see it every year in Hartford, they talk about 830G, but that is the law as it stands today, and that is the law that you're charged and you have a duty to uphold. I'm going to have Paul Vitaleano come up here in a second, but I just want to talk a little bit about the so-called investigation that Ms. Swain did into Westerly Water. On projects of this size, there are literally months of work that go in to designing the engineering, designing the application. We meet, and I've done literally dozens, if not 100, projects in Stonington over the last 15 years. We meet with all the city departments and agencies. We have multiple meetings with them. We have emails, we have telephone calls, we go back and forth, we debate issues, we share ideas, we revise plans. And so, if I went back in the last 15 years, I probably have 10,000 emails, just probably in Stonington alone, of all the different correspondence. You cannot cherry pick a period of emails between an applicant or an applicant's engineer in this case and a review company and suggest that there was something that's not properly done, or something that was missed, or something that was skipped. In the review process, it's a give and take and a back and forth. The emails that Ms. Swain references refer to the ongoing discussions with the Westerly Water Department and our civil engineer more than two years ago, prior to the approval of the last project. I want to read to you, and I think this is very important, this is from your staff's own report, I want to make it separate into the record, but I want to read to you, "The public water system capacity analysis for project feasibility." And I think it's really important because I think it goes right to the heart of the issue. Public water is available at this location through the Westerly Water Company. A 2020 hydraulic analysis performed by the water company's consulting engineer A 2020 hydraulic analysis performed by the water company's consulting engineer concludes that the existing water distribution system is adequate to serve the domestic demands of the project with required fire flow pressure. This conclusion was reached whether water is provided through Cogswell Street or the alley next to the donut shop. And I would continue, and this is important for tonight. Current comments from the Westerly Utilities Division state that the findings of that report are still valid. And the planning commission's recommendation regarding project feasibility is feasible. We worked with the Westerly Water Department. We paid at our own expense for an entire modeling of their system. That created this 2020 hydraulic analysis that found that we had sufficient water availability and at pressure to serve this project. We did that prior to the last approval. That report was entered into the record of the original approval, and this commission approved the original project. We then went back, even though the building's smaller, less units, we went back to confirm that again. And they've given written test, written evidence that's in your record that says that the conclusions of that 2020 study that said it was adequate are still valid. So this back and forth and that there's some kind of a smoking gun, it's ridiculous. It's not true. I'm going to have our engineer come up in a second and confirm that and go on the record on that issue. But I really, really would urge you to rely on your staff who has seen the actual report, who can understand it and who has actually provided that to you in his report. So at this point, I just, for the record, because of the nature of the concerns that were raised, I'd ask Mr. Vitaleano, who is a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, to come up and just confirm for the record that our water flows are sufficient and they've been approved by Westerly Water.
Excuse me, will you be coming back to answer some of Carleen's?
Yes, I'll keep going. I just, I thought I'd be more effective this way.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Once again, for the record, Paul Vitaleano from VHB. Everything Bill said was spot on. Basically, those conversations, we remember them well because they happened really quickly. And basically, if more email chains were read into the record, you would see that at our client's expense, a water study was done and the conclusion of that study was that there was adequate water. To quickly add a follow-up on that, there was a discussion about water loop. Cogswell's a dead-end street, so basically we're being serviced from the main that's on Route 1. So whether there is, basically the water that services us is from that dead-end loop and would not, or that dead-end line would not impact any loop on Route 1.
Will you be putting an eight-inch line in, replacing the six-inch?
Honestly, I don't remember. I'd have to look at the plans to see that.
That's what the report says.
If that's what it says, then that's what we're doing.
So there is an upgrade that replaces the six-inch that was being made reference to in previous letters as being inadequate.
If that's what it shows on the plan, I don't remember exactly.
It clearly says it. It clearly says that in the report.
From the water consulting engineer.
The existing six-inch cast iron main that everybody was pointing at is being replaced with an eight-inch PVC water main.
Okay, thank you. And basically, that water line has not changed since our last submission. So if that's what we submitted in 2020, that's what we're submitting.
It also says it's being looped, which would make a difference.
Yep.
So just based on that, that means that the fire, the comment about having a fire in one building might affect other buildings is no longer.
I wouldn't know that.
We can't answer that.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say that, but it does say that a hydraulic model analysis was done and that with this pipe replacement, replacing the existing six-inch cast iron water main on Cogswell with an eight-inch PVC water main and rerunning the model, you get the fire flows that are required.
I actually do want to amend the last statement I did where I said we did not change anything from 2020. We actually did make a change. We met with the fire department and they asked that the water line on Cogswell be extended to the north, all the way to our entrance, and then looped back up into our road. That doesn't create a true loop. We're still being serviced from our tap on West Main. However, we are extending our line to the site from both entrances.
Thank you.
This isn't, the statements are not being made by Westerly Water either. This is C and E, who is a consulting engineer that works for Westerly Water, that maintains the hydraulic model of the whole system. And when people come in and want to do something, they can simulate in this hydraulic model the effects of multiple fires in town. And that's what they do when they run the hydraulic model.
That's absolutely correct, what Commissioner Sheehan stated. It's a very expensive process. Nobody else I know requires an applicant to do that modeling, except for Westerly Water. So if I do a project, for instance, in the other part of town, I don't have to do that, but I have to do it for Westerly Water.
Well, I assume the state must weigh in on the sprinkler system as well, right?
Well, there is fire code issues, and that's where, if you saw, if you listened, there was an interplay with Chief Burns in Pawtucket. I would point out that Chief Burns has submitted a letter into the record as well. So he's the fire marshal. He signed off on the project with the revised plans. We actually met with him, I want to say, the last week in November, right after Thanksgiving. We went through and we made a couple of changes, including providing that interior loop system. And we also, he wanted us to move a tree so that the bucket on the ladder truck wouldn't hit it. Just a couple of little things like that. He wanted to make sure that we had addressed on the plan. So that's part of your record. That's the record that you have to rely on for approval. The fire marshal has reviewed this and found it to be adequate.
We have that. We have all that information.
Great.
Thank you.
I want to move on then to Mr. Capazano. Mr. Capazano pointed, made the statement that, well, sometimes traffic studies are wrong and that anecdotal evidence may be right sometimes. Without questioning that statement, I want to tell you what the law is. And the law is very clear, that issues of traffic are issues of expert testimony. These, there are professionals who are trained to determine appropriate traffic generation and follow state-accepted guidelines. That our Supreme Court has found that in issues of traffic consideration, the commission must give due weight to expert testimony. That what it means is you have to give the weight of an expert like Mr. Balcos, as opposed to the anecdotal evidence that might be submitted by a member of the public. He said that the project doesn't fit. He says it's a quality of life issue. Those are not criteria that are allowed to be considered under 8-30G. You can't even consider a character anymore under 8-2. That was taken away last year by the Connecticut Legislature. But you certainly can't, and you couldn't even before last year, consider those types of issues in an 830G application. I did appreciate, though, Mr. Capazano did say something positive about the project. He mentioned that our front facade was very nice, and I appreciate that. I want to thank him for that. He mentioned that the back could use some improvement. The ADRB also felt that way, and they actually made changes. We made changes as a courtesy to them to try to address that issue, which we showed earlier in our presentation. Taxpayer funding of 830 projects is not relevant to the matter at hand before you. Finally, I'd like to shift to Ms., for Carleen's comments. The island in West Broad Street is not raised. It's striped. Why? Because if it was raised, plows would take it out during the winter. So DOT would never allow us to raise the island. It's a striped island in the center of the road. The light on the corner, apparently it might be out, certainly. You know, that's something that'll be addressed, I'm sure, by DOT, and we can remind them of that. We certainly don't want a lot of obnoxious lights in that intersection either. I don't, I don't think my client wants that. Obviously, though, at the end of the day, and this is really important, DOT has final jurisdiction over what happens within their right of way. On the height issue, we did request a waiver on the height. We are considerably back from commercial buildings along West Broad Street. There are no residential buildings within any proximity to our proposed project. But more importantly, that requirement cannot be imposed upon us. We asked for the waivers out of courtesy and to try to be what we call a friendly 830G application. You try to show as much compliance as possible. But that's certainly not something, a shadow plan is not something that the commission can require in an 830G application. On the ADRB changes, we changed the back as requested, and we also revised the front entrance. I'd like to just have Paul Humphreys come up quickly and explain what we changed on the front entrance to address Carleen's question. Paul, could you just very briefly come up and just point at that?
Do you have a before and after, maybe?
It's not selected before and after, but I can.
You might need the microphone if you're going to wander around.
If you can do the same for the back, that would, I would appreciate that.
The back, huh?
Yes.
So I'll.
Got three hands.
So I, we took the design review comments that it was difficult to kind of understand how a pedestrian scale, given the height of the building and kind of understanding. So what we felt that it was very, we agreed with them that it was difficult to understand, you know, how a pedestrian would relate as they come up to the entrance. And it's really kind of hard to see. We actually did do quite a lot of design and had a lot of features, you know, to protect people from, you know, getting wet as they come into the building. And there really is that sense of scale that a pedestrian would want. So we, so we just did it, we did an enlarged view. So we did maintain the brick. Other improvements that we did, landscaping, there is this, the front steps, this is about two feet above, so the actual elevation is two feet above the flood plain. So it's at elevation 12. So we created a ramp, a pedestrian ramp that's right over here, which would create a landscaping opportunity. And so really, we felt that was a matter of scale. And we added those scale elements, which add to the pedestrian experience.
Could you, Paul, could you just, for Commissioner Conway, could you just point out the changes on the rear building?
Well, we actually have a rear perspective as well. We brought that as well. So again, similar to what we did in the front with the gable ends, we brought down the scale of the rear facade. So we also, before it was a lot of gray siding. It was a lot of gray clappards. And so we did put a lot more thought into it. We actually created these insets. We've created some insets, and then that ties together with that top band element. Yeah, that top with the white facade and really breaks that facade up.
Excuse me, this is seat A4-05?
A4-05, yes.
That's the most recent one?
Yes. And it shows the view from the tracks.
That's in your package. Here you go.
As well. So we show the view from the tracks, which we didn't initially. Right.
So the change, just again, because I don't have a before and after of the changes. So the changes you've added white versus the gray on one end of the building?
Yes, and broke up the facade as well.
And you broke it up with the gable, okay.
Yes. And then also, again, by adding that band under the fourth store, under the fourth floor windows, kind of like we did in front to break up that facade, we did in the rear as well.
Is there a reason you didn't do it all the way across?
I'm sorry. Repeat the question.
So you only did it on one end. Why didn't you do it all the way across?
To keep it more broken up.
Well, by breaking up the roof line, it actually does create, it actually does make the units a little bit smaller. There is, it does impact the quality of the unit. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to maintain that. See you tonight.
Thanks, Paul. Ms., Carleen also suggested that she thought there was a, there was a false contention in the traffic study. Obviously, Carleen's not a traffic engineer, but I will have Joe Balcos come up and just explain how and why he allocated the trips, leaving the project the way he did and in the proportions that he did. Joe, if you could just come up and explain that quickly.
Good, for the record, Joe Balcos. So if you refer to the, that's a question, page, on page 14 of the traffic, sorry, page 15, page 14, 15, I'm sorry, page 15 of the traffic report, we referenced the data we used to develop that distribution, where traffic's going. And we used the U.S. Census Bureau American Community Survey Journey to Work data via the Census Transportation Planning Products Database. So that gives us where everyone's going in terms of, in terms of the morning peak hour, the afternoon peak hour. And using that, some engineering judgment, existing traffic volumes, allows us to develop this distribution of where traffic's going to Westerly, going to Liberty Street, and going to points west and to Mystic. And then just one last point was regarding the Liberty Street intersection. That intersection is being reviewed by DOT. I talked with DOT about a month ago, back in October, on this very project, and asked them what's going on. And they acknowledged that it's been a while, but they are back to looking at it, and they are reviewing options for that intersection. So that is being investigated by DOT, as they should. No, I'm sorry, no, there's no, no. We are not proposing anything there because, two years ago and now today, the DOT is reviewing it because it's their intersection, both Route 2 and Route 1. And it's a critical intersection, and they're reviewing it. So no, we are not proposing improvements there.
Thank you.
Carleen was concerned that I had used the 2010 census in my application materials for calculating the 5.71% of housing in Stonington that meets the affordable standard. That's not what I used. If you look at my application package, I actually have the legally binding, the legally binding document, which is the DCD's 2021 Affordable Housing Appeals Act list. It's the exemption list. And so whatever data is out there, whether it's the right data or the wrong data, it's the Department of Economic and Community Development, they create and they publish on an annual basis. They didn't do it during COVID because they got delayed, but they did it last year for 2021. They tell us how many units of affordable housing, meeting the different standards, are there in Stonington and every other town in the state. And then they calculate a percentage. Town of Stoning can disagree with it. They can say it's the wrong numbers. They missed something. Doesn't matter. The legal standard is what's on that list. And so that list actually shows Stonington has gone the wrong way over the last couple of years. When I was here in 2020, the 2019 list had you at about 5.9%. You're at 5.7% now. So you're actually going down over those two-year periods. So it really, it really points out the fact that there needs to be some effort to move, if you want to have full control over development in your town, you really want to get to the 10%. And so, so again, the legal standard is what I provided. 90% of the units in this development will be considered affordable housing. So that's an additional 60 units, 60 out of 70, will meet the affordable housing standard as we're proposing right now. That's what our affordability plan, which has to ultimately be approved with ICHFA, that's what we're showing, that's what we're proposing this evening, and that's what's reflected in the document that I submitted into the record. So that concludes my rebuttal. I want to thank you for your time tonight. I want to thank you for the attention. This commission supported this project two years ago. I hope that you continue to support it. I think it's a better project today than it was two years ago. I think you did the right thing by approving it two years ago, but I think this is a far better project. And I hope someday we can all stand in front of this building for the grand, the grand opening and the ribbon cutting. But again, thank you for your time tonight. If you have any other questions, I'll make my team available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, before you get to the staff, would you be all right if we take a five-minute intermission? Stretch the legs. Okay, let's meet back at 9:15. Excuse me. I know. I'd like to keep moving. Keith, would you like to keep going with the staff comments, please?
As part of this, for a development this size and this many residential units, the zoning regulations actually require that our.
zoning regulations actually require that our department comes up with a, what it calls a conceptual evaluation of the basic project feasibility. So you look at all the elements of the plan, look at whether they are feasible or not. And to cut to the chase, there are no issues with feasibility in, in looking at this. And this is after sending it out to the various departments and experts who give us comments in all different areas. We talked about the fire marshal and the comments from him. Their comments were addressed here. Westerly Water, we've read their comments into the record here. Same with the WPCA. As far as engineering and stormwater impacts, these plans, as well as the original plans, were reviewed by the town engineer and the town's engineering consultant. And they both had some minor comments, but didn't have any, any significant issues with the drainage or anything like that. We sent the plan to our flood hazard consultant also, and all these comments are spelled out in the report. And he was satisfied that the plan met all the relevant flood hazard requirements. And as was noted, this plan actually raises the ground floor by one foot compared to the one two years ago. So the flood resilience is a little enhanced here. And as far as the comments we received, yeah, those are spelled out here. Architectural Review Board, recommended approval. They did note that, you know, without resolution of those two items, they, the application did not have the approval of the ADRB. But as was stated, you know, they did revise the rear facade and, you know, they wanted to see these drawings again after the planning and zoning commission's decision, just for their review. But as was stated, especially in an 830G development, you know, the architecture isn't something that they could be denied on. So as far as recommended stipulations here, there are some spelled out in the report. Number one is the final plan shall be recorded in the town's land evidence records. Number two, the final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer in Pawtucket Fire District. Number three, standard language for erosion and sedimentation control bond. Number four is the public access easement shall be recorded prior to the issuance of any zoning permits. Number five, transportation-related off-site improvements that are approved by Connecticut DOT shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance. Number six, the applicant shall provide a flood evacuation plan to the Department of Planning prior to issuance of a zoning permit, which shall be recorded in the town's land evidence records. And number seven, the DEP general stormwater permit shall be obtained prior to the issuance of any zoning permits. And the commission votes here as the decision on the special use permit waivers and the special use permit itself.
Keith, excuse me, going back to number four, the specific language permitting construction of a future pedestrian bridge, is that still in the works?
There's no specific plans for it.
And where would that land on the Pawtucket side? I mean, it's, it's not definitive at all, it's just a conceptual?
It is pretty, pretty much a conceptual thing. I mean, it's sort of understood it would land near the higher elevation there, sort of adjacent to the...
The old bridge apartment?
Yeah, like the proposed little recreation area for the residents there.
Great, thank you.
So in general here, I mean, we are dealing with an approved development that's being modified to be smaller in a few different ways. So I mean, the choice is the previous approval or this modification. You know, where obviously denial of the whole project isn't an option at this point. And yeah, just to reiterate, the affordable housing law here, you know, these applications can really only be denied for real health or safety reasons that outweigh the need for affordable housing and can't be mitigated by reasonable changes to the proposal. It's a town's burden to prove that these health and safety reasons exist. You know, and reasons to deny an affordable housing application don't include an increase in traffic or parking demand that doesn't live up to those health and safety standards, general environmental concerns that don't live up to the health and safety standards, lack of conformance with the zoning regulations, or the notion that too many affordable housing applications are concentrated in one area of town, or aesthetics, or the notion of, of community character. You know, just to talk about a few points that were said, you know, the voters didn't vote down the project, the voters voted down the tax abatement.
Understood.
And as far as traffic, I mean, you know, it was shown that this is a low-traffic generating site, and even so, I mean, you know, the thing to consider is whether that outweighs the need for affordable housing, you know, the affordable housing crisis in, in the area. Yeah, and you know, as, as Mr. Rosen stated too, this is the first real significant redevelopment in downtown Pawtucket. There have been some buildings that have been fixed up, which has been great. This is the first real significant redevelopment, and it is something that for decades that people have been striving for, that plans have been recommending, that the Pawtucket redevelopment organization has been striving for. So, you know, it does represent growing pains to an extent, but it is, you know, sort of the culmination of those, those plans here. And I think that's, I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Keith.
Keith, could you, um, could you elaborate a little bit on the numbers as far as if this was approved and the project moved forward with the 70 units, 90% of which being categorized as affordable housing, in addition to the recent approval that we had in the project near Stonington High School? What that would do to our overall percentage of inventory?
Um, you know, I'm not sure how it would literally affect the percentage because it has to be weighed against other market rate developments that are approved. And first of all, things don't count unless they're actually constructed.
Until it lived in, right?
Yeah. And lived in. So something like the one, the one at Brookside wouldn't count until it's actually constructed and lived in.
I could answer, I could answer your question too, if it, if it helps.
Please.
So, so in, last year, Stonington had 9,467 affordable units, I mean, 9,467 total units of housing in town. 541 of those were considered affordable. So if you added 60 new units and they, let's say they were built next year, it probably won't be next year that were built, you would get up, you would increase up over 6% by just this project alone. One of the things to remember, though, is that units come off as well. So a few months ago, you, you approved the Brookside development, and behind, behind the new projects, there's the old affordable housing. Well, that comes off this year, all those houses. But Gilbane, Gilbane, which is Brookside Limited Partnership, made a deal with the state to put it back in for another 30 years. So you're going to keep those, even though they were about to roll off, because those were built in the early 1980s. I think 1980 plus 40 years, 2020. So that would have gone to, if they didn't reroll that back in, it would have become, it would become market rate or non-affordable, and you would have lost that, you know, couple hundred units back there, which would have been really devastating. So one of the things to think about is it's not just building new, but the ones that you have, sort of monitoring them and saying, you know, is there something that we can do to encourage an owner to keep them deed restricted so that they continue to count?
Right.
It's a really important thing. It's sort of, sort of an overall strategy to long-term maintaining, because you could get to 10% and then you could lose it. I'm working in some towns right now that, I'm working in some towns in Middlesex County, that they're requiring all projects to provide anywhere between 10 and 20% affordable. And that's not affordable housing, not 830G projects, but if you want to do 100 units of multifamily housing, 10 to 20 of them have to be affordable because they don't want to lose ground. They don't want to lose their step.
Yep.
And so it's, it's, it's actually, I think in the next 20 years, you know, hopefully I'm practicing for some of that, but I think that's going to be the biggest issue facing a lot of towns in this area, is how do we stay, how do we get to 10 and how do we stay at 10?
Stay at, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the?
I knew you asked me a lot of questions last time, and I didn't have the answers, so I have everything laid out. I have my Lynn Conway section right here, because I couldn't answer you at the last hearing on some of these questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And another thing is that sometimes people comment, oh, Pawtucket has whatever, 15% affordable housing. Like, whatever that calculation is, that doesn't count or exist. I don't know where that figure comes from, but you just, by law, have to look at the whole town. You just can't pick one area and say that has too much affordable housing.
Mr. Chairman, could I just talk about, could I just address one of the stipulations that was suggested in the staff report?
Yes.
Stipulation seven reads, DEP general stormwater permit shall be obtained prior to the issuance, of issuance of any zoning permit. The DEP general stormwater permit is required, it's a registration with DEP for sites that are disturbing five or more acres of land. So that's not us. Just like we don't need to get an OSTA permit because we're not a major traffic generator, we're not big enough to get a DEP stormwater permit. So I'm happy with it staying there, in there, if you'd like, but just if you could add the words "if applicable," because I don't think it's applicable, and, and I think, you know, maybe if, you know, maybe Keith will agree with me that it shouldn't be there at all, but just, that would help us just to not have that as a confusing issue.
I don't, I don't think it's applicable either.
Yeah, it's...
It just, it just doesn't meet the criteria for a general permit.
Correct.
Yeah, that's true.
I have a, I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we address that when we get to making a motion, whether we include number seven or not?
It deals with number two.
Number two.
And I'd like to expand upon condition number two, that talks about the plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer in Pawtucket Fire District. I'd like to add, work shall not proceed without the written approval of the Pawtucket Fire District and the Westerly Water Company.
Any other discussion?
I like that.
It's fine by me.
Yeah, by me, yeah.
Okay. Keith, did you notate that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question?
Okay with that, Keith?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have one for the civil engineer, and maybe, or Mr. Sweeney, Attorney Sweeney, what makes this a green building?
Won't be the civil engineer, but I'm going to get the team member to explain that.
Excuse me, the architect.
Paul Humphreys, our architect, will address your question. Thank you.
So in, in terms of, you know, being environmentally conscious, this, this project will actually be going for what's called passive house certification, which is, effectively makes us one of the greenest, it's, it's one of the greenest standards that you can, that there, that is out there right now. So there'll be added insulation throughout the building in every single, and also, a lot of attention is going to be paid to how various items connect, you know, so all the intersections of walls and roofs and everything is very carefully detailed, which is part of this passive house standard. And in addition to that, we will also be seeking a LEED Platinum as well, which is the, also the highest rated LEED project that you can take.
That's the highest, that's the highest.
I assume Platinum would be?
Yeah.
We'll be seeking both.
I'm just curious, what, what agency determines where you get that, you're awarded that classification?
We are working with, we, we are working with a sustainability consultant on that. Matt, maybe you can answer a few more questions.
I'm just curious, if it's a state agency that says, you submit and they say, yes, you...
Yeah, Matt's probably, he's of the...
Do you use solar or geothermal? What do you?
Yeah, I, Matt Rubina from Wing Companies, we haven't spoken to you this evening. So as it relates to the LEED Platinum certification, the U.S. Green Building Council is the one who ultimately you submit the, the documentation to you, to them, and they're the ones who give you the plaque. The passive house standard is monitored by the Passive House Institute of the U.S. So these are both independent organizations. They, they hire engineers and architects and consultants to review the, the documentation that you have to submit pictures, logs, information about the materials that were installed in order to receive the certification at the end of construction. You had a question about renewables, so we do plan on having a small solar array on the roof of the building. We don't plan any, any geothermal at this point, that is, we found that it's still pretty cost prohibitive with the technology that's out there, but we do plan on including some small renewable amount.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Gary Marge, do I hear a motion to close?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm sorry, I was just, I know, because I know I can't talk right after it closes.
Yes.
I was just going to say, no questions, but I think someone mentioned that this development will really be transformational for Pawtucket, and I couldn't agree more. And I think it's really exciting and a great use for that space, so just wanted to put that in there.
Thank you, Marge.
Yeah.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Thank you, Ryan. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
So moved. Who would like to begin this discussion?
Do we begin with the waivers?
Yeah.
Do we have to move the waivers first?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion that we grab the waivers that are stipulated on page 53 of Keith's report, there's five of them, as requested.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Ryan, for seconding it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next motion would be on the special use permit, to approve that. I just want one clarification, did we decide whether we were going to remove this number seven stipulation or add the additional language?
It doesn't meet the criteria. It's, the site's too small.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, just to get rid of that. Okay. So then I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit with the six stipulations that are on Keith's report on page 59.
Thank you, Ryan. We hear a second?
We're going to add the language to item two, with the additional language on item two.
Excuse me, yeah. Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Gary. Rabbit D.
Do we have to make a motion to move that?
Yeah, let's see, it depends on, depends on the schedule and if there's a need for a meeting on January 3rd.
Word.
Because we could continue it, we could open the hearing, continue it to January 3rd or January, I think it's 17th.
So on the 17th, we do Rabbits?
It would be Rabbits, Mystic Seaport, and there's another small...
Mason's Island and Flack. The Flack subdivision.
Oh, the Mason's Island would just be an executive session. There's also a small hearing for a liquor permit at a restaurant.
Let's do, let's put it all, 7, give ourselves a vacation on the 3rd.
Make a motion to continue the Rabbit hearing to January 17th.
Thank you, Ryan. We hear a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. All those in favor of the Rabbit on the 17th?
The Rabbit.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Fred. If I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, everybody.
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 Thank you, everybody.